How are you doing?
Good, all right.
Thanks very much for being here. We really appreciate it. Can I get you anything else?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe. One song during the meeting and then after that. Yeah, maybe. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We'll be here soon. Oh, good. Get in there, Renal. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30. Thank you. And I just hear you guys at 7:30.
I can't take any credit for their success during the season either. That's all of the hard work that they put in over the summer and during the season. If it didn't go well, I would have accepted that blame, but if it goes well, they get the credit. So it's truly your shit. Good job.
Outstanding, absolutely outstanding. When you mention these names and we see these faces, these are the who's who of just amazing young people in our schools. You continue to make us proud. Thank you for representing our school district so beautifully and honorably. Really outstanding. Give them one more round of applause. Parents, would you mind joining us too for the picture?
A lot of pictures, so be patient. One more, one more. I think we got most of those parents.
We'll let focus on some of the pictures.
Ready? One, two, three, hold still. Ooh, that looks good, one more. I have no idea. All right. I don't know whose this is, but okay, one, two, three. And one, two, three. Oh, see what, I think it's taking a video. Yeah, it went off, so. This is a silent goer.
Outstanding. It was dramatic.
We made it.
Good timing, Dale. How are you doing?
I was wondering.
One of the great programs that our school district has is the Building Bridges program, and we're starting our third year, and we're super excited to have Emily as part of that team, and Ashley as well. Again, in general overview, they service kids in the district really 4K through eighth grade, kind of on direct support. They can go into ninth grade and they can have some incidental benefit for high school, but it's really focused on pre-k through eighth grade. The services involve professional development for staff and for families, and also direct supports and indirect supports for students. And so, with Emily here tonight, to kind of talk about some of the work that they're doing and some of the data that came, has come out of the surveys and information that we've gathered.
Yep. I have a handout for you guys. This just goes over some of the numbers that I'm going to share, so then you can have a visual to what I'm talking about. So, we service 12 students. It's essentially per semester, so we see 24 students a year. And the survey feedback that we got is based on the spring semester of last year, because we're still in our current round of cases right now, so I don't have data that would answer these questions yet, but I will. So of our survey data from the spring semester of last year, we found that 97% of parents felt understood by the Building Bridges staff. 95% of parents felt that they knew where to go to get their needs, so whether that was basic needs, mental or behavioral health support needs, various other resources, et cetera. 92% of parents felt they knew ways to support their child at home and at school. 90% of parents felt supported and knew who to contact for support at school, and that's really one of our biggest goals, is to build that bridge between home and school. Hence the title of our program. On the school side, 77% of school staff reported improved behavior in the classroom. So that's a number that we're continuing to work on to move that up. 85% of school staff reported an increased understanding of how student mental health impacts academic success. And so, a way that we're continuing to improve on that number is working on various professional development topics to cover trauma, trauma-informed care, how to make classrooms more trauma-sensitive. 85% of school staff noticed an increase in parent involvement. 93% of school staff reported that there was a team coordinating services to meet the students' needs. So, in some cases, we have students that are kind of involved in a lot of different areas. They have their school piece, they have what's going on at home, and then they might have outside providers too. And those outside providers are really important in providing insight to what might better help a student be more successful at school. And so, a big part of our program is trying to coordinate and get everybody on the same page to address students' needs and school setting. So overall, what I'm hearing from parents is that they feel listened to, they know who to go for support at school, and they're getting connected to necessary resources. And on the school side, I'm hearing that the communication with families is one of the biggest pieces, supporting students in the classroom and connecting them to outside resources as well. So of the students that we served in that spring semester, right now, in December is our, we call it a six-month follow-up, to check in to see how students are doing. Because we're such a short-term, 90-day intensive program, it's nice to be able to connect back with families and see if there's any additional support that we can provide. So we ended up working with 10 students and their families in the spring semester, and of those 10 families, four are still connected to mental health resources, and we're actually getting three of them currently set up with services now. So for whatever reason in the spring, the families weren't ready or able to get connected to those resources, so the six-month follow-up time is a time that we can step back in and do that, which is a really nice aspect of our program. So it's just kind of, it's not 90 days, and it's not like we ever talk to the parents again. There is some follow-up after that. So, fast forward to this school year, we had, during our first round of referrals, we were accepting referrals from September 1st to October 15th. And we actually got more than what we were allotted in our 12-family caseload. We had more referrals than that, which is great. It means that the school teams understand what Building Bridges can offer to families and who might be appropriate for referrals. So we did have to do some prioritization of like, what families need these services right now. And so, that doesn't mean that those other families can't participate in Building Bridges, but they're just at the top of our list for the spring semester. So some demographic info of the families that we're working with right now, we have six students at the middle school, three students at the IC, one student at the PC, and two students at the ELC. There are three female students and nine male students, and 10 out of our 12 students are already connected to mental health services, so whether that's one-on-one therapy, in-home family therapy, or psychiatry, or possibly a combination of more than one. So what's really nice is when we get those referrals earlier on in the referral period, you can get started a little bit earlier. And the mental health system is really difficult to navigate, even if you're an expert, working with insurance, finding a provider that's going to be a good fit, or a therapist that would really work with a student's personality or be a good fit for them, is not always easy to do. So that allows us the time to really find who would, who would be the best match for any given student. Our next referral period begins January 1st and runs through February 1st, so it's a little bit shorter than that first one, but we'll be accepting another 12 students at that time. And so, we'll still be closing up some of the students that we're working with now and wrapping up the services with those families, but then we'll be officially open with 12 more students for the spring semester. On the bottom of the handout that I gave, there's a little diagram that says Preventing ACEs, and I'm not going to go over all of this, but ACEs stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of components that Building Bridges is really striving to work on, and that's helping parents to get childcare that fits their schedules, because that's not always easy, especially if it's like a single-parent family and they might work full-time, so helping parents to get the necessary services. Teaching social-emotional skills at school and at home. So some of the biggest things we see are that students just need ongoing skills in social skills with friendships, and also learning how to regulate their emotions at school to limit behaviors in the classroom. Building, helping relationships with their parents, with teachers and other staff at school, and our number-one goal is to like, find one person that students feel they can connect to at school, because when we see that students are connected, we see that they're more likely to be successful. We try to do our best to help with parenting skills and family relationships, mentoring in various after-school programs, and then working to get them connected to services that can lessen the harm of the adverse childhood experiences or any trauma that they may have experienced in the past. So, we're excited about our referral period, and we're super excited to be in Montmoreau. This is our third year, and it's been really great.
We really appreciate it too, because Ashley's headed the other team member and had consistent growth through three years, it's really been helpful, and making connections with families and all of the resources within the community has really been beneficial.
Yeah, definitely. I think the nice thing about Montmoreau is, compared to our counterparts in larger districts, we've really been able to build meaningful relationships with school staff too, the student service teams, some of the teachers. So I now know a lot of school staff on like a more personal basis, so I get to interact with them every single day, and other districts don't quite have that same opportunity, so it's been really nice. I'm happy to be here.
Do you ever have kids that are in the program for, well, it's only been three years here, but come back to the program?
Yes.
Does that happen?
It does happen. So that's, we call that a re-referral. And so, because we're a short-term, 90-day intervention program, the biggest sort of like, feedback we get of what would make the program better is if it were longer. And our goal is to try to make some sustainable connections that can last once we're out, but we do see that happen, or behaviors maybe start to escalate once we're not involved. And so, we always staff those cases with Brian and with the student service teams at the schools, but we have taken students in another round in the past. So we can do it. It just depends.
Yeah, there's two ways. Is one is to do the re-referral, and the second way that we've kind of worked through it is also having siblings qualify for the program, so we keep a connection, overall connection of the family, and can keep providing the family the support as well, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. With siblings, we try not to take them in the same round, because we just really want to focus our attention on one student, but that's a great way to stay involved with families for potentially the whole school year, is to then work with the sibling in the spring semester or coming fall semester.
Do the connecting to resources, does it ever lead to a referral to the school-based mental health program?
It does. Organ mental health, yes, and we work very closely with them as well. So, a lot of times, organ mental health is the best option, because being a more rural district, it's really hard for families to get to Madison. If they don't have reliable transportation, there's not really public transportation, so sometimes the school-based mental health is the best option. And the director has been really great with, like, if a certain insurance isn't covered, she really works with the families to make it the most accessible that she can. They've been really an awesome resource for us to refer.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thanks for coming.
All right, here we have your 60 information and advocacy report. Sarah Straka's coming down to tell us about that.
Hi, Sarah. How are you guys?
Great.
So, the focus of the data on this one advocacy report is a little different than what we had in the summer. In the summer, we had a data retreat, you guys did the tic-tac-toe activity. We really get more comparative data. Montmoreau compared to five school districts maybe a little larger than us, five school districts a little smaller than us, surrounding area districts in their data conference. This year's, or this report reporting looks more at our own student level data and compares peers with proficiency in the world. And that's the goal of this report, to look at how students are growing and how students are achieving in terms of their grade level scores. Provided just some examples within the slideshow, because the report has both reading and math, science and social studies throughout, but I just wanted to have a glimpse for the presentation portion. Again, looking at our map. Again, our map has been the constant assessment that we use for probably 10 to 15 years now, and we've had how our students are achieving and growing. The slide that's shown right now is an example of student growth throughout the time, where the blue bar represents the observed actual growth, and the golden triangles where students are projected to grow based on how they do the opening, September or fall assessments. So, we've been seeing some of the growth, especially this past school year, where all of the assessed grade levels in math reached their projected growth level. So it was nice to see. And looking then mostly more at proficiency, I want to provide just another view within the recording, within the presentation, looking at then the proficiency. So how are we, first students reaching that percentile range? And I highlighted that in the red box, so you can see that our students are again highly achieving, which we know, but we want to make sure that students are reaching their growth target. So I provided in the green box just another way of looking at what percent of students meeting their projected growth. We may think, oh, we want 70, 80, 90% of our students meet their projected growth. But statistically, the math looks at if 50% or more of your students are meeting their projected growth, that's good, based on the filter and other, how do I say, standard error. On the other side, I think it's like a 3% to 5% standard error, which means could or cannot meet their growth. So basically, all information from NWA for the data for students are if the 50% are higher as a group meeting their growth, we're doing good. So I just wanted to come to that with that in the box there. And as we look for our data treats in the summer, we like to dig even deeper into our data, so I'm going to show an example of that and how we're using it. This figure probably isn't unknown or new to the educational community, but as we were going through and reviewing elementary math, and looking at areas where we maybe aren't doing as well as we could, we started to look at our math data, and looking at operations and algebraic thinking, that's an area, year-over-year, grade level, or grade-to-October grade level, where we just don't see as high a proficiency as we do the elementary measurement data. So we use that information as we move forward to talk about our current everyday math program, and then how, and what we want other programs to help support, maybe that area where we can use a little more proficiency and growth in. So, that was a conversation that I think our teachers know that their students need more help and more support in that operations and algebraic thinking, and they've been supplementing our current everyday math program as well as they can, but that was a consideration as we're looking at future resources and making that final decision. And going from the little kiddos to the bigger kiddos, just providing our ECT data, this is the same data that the board looked at in the summer, but just close eyes to see where we're at again, and how we compare that to the state, and how we compare over time as Montmoreau is. One update I just wanted to provide, since we are talking about assessments, I think this Michael's, what was part of a conversation we had, I want to say last year, maybe a year and a half ago, I think other board members too, about assessments, and how many assessments we're doing, and assessment fatigue and those kinds of things. So, at that point, I shared that we were looking at another assessment system called FastBridge, and taking a look at, is this assessment, will this assessment still meet our needs, but we're using a lot of tests and a lot of time, those kinds of things. So we are in our second year, compiling FastBridge, and I just found this slide, how it's like math and unlike math, and it's attractive for these reasons. It's a universal screener, given to students three times a year, but unlike math, we can also progress monitor. So progress monitor means, with students receiving an intensive intervention, maybe they're working with Sherry Jackson, or passion other reading specialist, or passion for who's a math interventionist, maybe they're working one-on-one even, and we want to see the intervention working, but then the student does like a short, one, two, three-minute progress monitor assessment to see if they're growing, is it working? With FastBridge, that's only one system, which is nice, if you want multiple assessment systems, so that can sometimes have disjointed data reporting, those kinds of things. Like math, FastBridge is computer-adaptive, so if a student answers this question, correct or incorrect, it'll move the question up or down. So there's that piece of FastBridge as well. But it only takes about 20 to 25 minutes to administer, whereas we're finding as students that are in fourth grade, sixth, seventh grade, eighth grade, are taking 70, 80 minutes. And that's true enough with a lot of time, that costs anxiety, that's not the goal. We want our district assessments to give us a reliable overview of how students are doing, but we still want to be a quick snapshot, because we have classroom assessments, we get teacher observations, those kinds of things as well, that we evaluate as well. Your math. So one platform, right now, we have K2 and fourth grade teachers using something called PALS, which is maximum measure literacy, we have math, we have a full-on screen, and then FastBridge, we have all these assessment systems that we like to use one system to keep it concise, clear, for staff, because especially elementary math, they have a lot of their plates with all different content areas they teach, which allows me to get them all these different recording and assessment systems to get into, and for the FastBridge, how's the platform work, how's the recording system work, all those kinds of things. So that's also attractive with FastBridge. And then we haven't dove into the behavior assessment piece, but there is a behavior assessments as well that we can use within our suite. So like I said, we're in our second year of pilot, we just wanted to collect more data, you know, only two or three testing grades last year. We got a good sense of what FastBridge could offer in Montmoreau, but we just want to be sure if we ever do move away from math, that FastBridge is the right fit for us. We, Patrick Puppi, he's our school psychologist at the intermediate center, and he ran some statistical analysis, and he found between FastBridge and math, they're pretty statistically significant, it was like .8 or .85. So basically, it'd be fun to see, let's say Catherine Straka was at the 80th percentile in math, what would she be at FastBridge, close to that percentile as well? And yeah, they're pretty statistically significant, one would be perfect, one to one. So, we're learning, we're finding some new things, I just wanted to share that journey in case we come back and say, hey, we found this product that we really like, we want to educate more on it.
And what content areas does FastBridge test for?
Yeah, good question. Currently, it is for literacy pieces and math that we're looking at.
Is there any sort of a timeline in mind for when you might make the decision about whether or not you're going to?
Yeah, good question. After fall testing, which is January, we'll have, in some cases, some grade levels, five pieces of data, which is nice to see, like five periods to see that significance. So we want to have more serious conversations by January, February-ish. At the K2 level, we had one to two plasters, like I said, advocacy for Not Do PALS, which is the literacy assessment that we're using, and try FastBridge. So we want them to get at least a fall and winter season under their belts before starting to ask like, what do you think, and those kinds of questions. So, we are on target for, I mean, like a winter check-in, follow-up, to see how we're feeling.
Sounds more efficient for all parties involved.
Yeah, yeah. As, especially as they move to professional learning communities, PLCs, we're really looking at what's happening at the classroom level, where are those common outcomes, do you want all students to have at a grade level? And those classroom assessments are also going to have, they've always had a lot of weight, but having those common assessments at that grade level will also have a large amount of weight where students can, I'm sorry, where teachers can use that data and that information that we teach. So it's a balance of things like this with the classroom assessments, and just realizing that there's a place for these kinds of assessments, and there's a purpose, but there's also a purpose for the classroom assessments as well, having that balance, and I think we need to continue to do some of that in the next go.
Are there like add-ons so we can do science and social studies at some point, or is it just?
At this time, there's not. Okay. I think that's going to give you more information as we move forward and decide this is the direction we're going in. Do you have other questions, Andrew?
How's the cost compare? Is that a factor?
They're allocated, well, they're comparable, so just to see how it works. But FastBridge, there's definitely, it costs less. So, I can think about a total math bill, but I can't think about a total FastBridge. I know that it's a huge cost.
That's okay, just, I was guessing.
Yeah, it is, it is a lot. There's things that we love about math too. So we love the large, we love data piece that we have. We have the fam, we like the family reports. FastBridge is working on the reports right now. We've actually, we're lucky enough to see a preview, because we've been asking them for new family reports, so they offered a preview to us last month, Katie and Patrick and I. So we were, we saw, we liked what we saw, obviously it can improve, but.
Family reports, is that what you said?
Family reports, yeah. The student, like, student information that goes home, so you probably have those for math, yeah.
How high is, have you piloted FastBridge?
We, it's been third through fifth for two years. We, in a, I think the sixth-grade math home rooms, we did it last year just once, just to see, once, see what they thought.
And part of it for us is also making certain that this is something that teachers who are administering this feel comfortable with, because we've spent a great deal of time in PD and then also in this resource with math, we're kind of beginning to change a little bit, and we want to be sensitive to overwhelming, because that's why we have our four core areas in our, in our work, is an administrative strategic plan. I think once there's critical mass amongst the teaching staff, for us to kind of move forward in this direction, I think we're going to be even better positioned to see if this is a direction to go or not. Applaud you, and I applaud the team. Applaud you and I applaud the team over at the IC for being innovative and looking at alternatives for us. This is really, really a nice opportunity for us to see. There's some triangulation in our data. The numbers, operations and relationships piece is evident regardless of FastBridge or math or teacher assessments, so we know that's an area that we need to improve in.
Questions, Rogers?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
I've got the reverse sides.
That is for the second cap. We're going to do our next information advocacy report in January.
Are you sure? Yes, we did the rest of it. Okay.
All right, moving on to 60, 2020 WSB board delegate review. So I guess that's me this year, right? I didn't mean to sound so nuts, but I mean, it's a lot of fun and there's really good conversation that happens during these meetings.
You get to play, you get to push buttons and vote and it's very fun. Bring a snack.
Bring a snack, okay.
Lots of water.
Well, they'll have the water there.
Yeah, but bring a snack.
So Steve provided us in the, in our board packet, the assembly documents and the review of resolutions.
You got your packet from the WASB in the mail, haven't you?
Probably.
She'll have it somewhere.
You could have by the end of November.
I'm sure.
Oh, she gets lots of Christmas cards.
No, I haven't gone to college. I get lots of college every time. This is really what it is. Every single college, it spends a lot of money on those glossy, you know, handouts to try and sweep people. So if there's anything in here, I guess if everybody wants to walk through the ideas or if you want, just if there's anything that anybody feels very strongly about, we can talk about how you'd like me to vote and represent all of us, so I don't want to presume to know how everybody would like me to vote.
Well, we've always told Mia to use her best judgment.
I was about to say the same thing.
I can add a little more, starting on page 10, it gives some, just a really brief synopsis of what the committee calls in terms of supporting or objecting to the resolution, so that may help you. Committee members are not allowed to vote unless they're the delegate, but if you had, you know, further questions that I could clarify as you're thinking about it, I'd be happy to let you know how everybody thought about them. And you should also be prepared for emergency resolutions because there'll be a few of those too and just have to use your best judgment there as well.
Do you have an example of emergency resolutions or Mia maybe remembers some emergency resolutions?
It's usually ones that people didn't turn in in time and so then they bring them and try to get them voted on to be, and depending on how long this goes, depends on if the room is interested in accepting them or not.
Sometimes it's like little stories, athletes in trouble, students protest, that kind of stuff that may just not have been in everyone's radar, you know, those were being written.
I had to deal with one of them when I was on the season board. It was a suicide issue. Oh my God, he spent a whole order on that one, a whole.
I think Leah's brought back some tales about some of the resolutions that they've overlooked. I will expect that. So if everybody's good with me just using my best judgment, I will do that.
Nothing stood out to me.
Okay. Further discussion. Great. We will move on to our action items. Our first action item is consideration of approval to send letter to Senator Luther Olson and he related with you, maybe author, or one of the authors of this.
I did, I authored this one. So Community Legislative Engagement Committee, this is one piece of our efforts on letters so that we can stay in touch with our local representatives and our state representatives. This particular topic, I think, has a good chance of succeeding, bill to law eventually. The Blue River Commission on State Funding hasn't made a whole lot of forward movement on a lot of items. I believe that the old bills I saw were scarcity aid and declining enrollment. We've got a little bit more for special ed, but they haven't really gone line by line on those recommendations. This is one that Luther Olson is a proponent of, so that helps. It doesn't cost any more tax or money, it doesn't directly benefit us, but it certainly could help smooth things out for everyone to know the same distribution schedule and will help some districts for short-term borrowing to make ends meet because of this lopsided schedule. So it just looks like a win-win and an easy ladder for that committee to get behind so we don't have your approval here for.
That was great, thank you Kimberly for writing the letter.
Do we have any idea why it hasn't already been changed to that? Is there something been blocking it in the past?
Uh, no, the state earns interest on the money, income to the, to about 2.5 million. So that's what, we lose that, but it's really our money in the first place because it's collected from taxpayers, so it's probably just an integrated system ready to even.
It is a resolution in the WASB.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Kimberly, we appreciate the full letter. Get that sent out to me.
Have you had a sign?
Signed by the.
I have kept a draft of your signatures that we can just, I'm trying to print of your papers.
All right. Moving on to 70, review of safety drill evaluations. I think Brian's coming down again to talk to us about safety drills.
This is a requirement under the new safety grant that we receive and each now December, boards of education are asked not only to review these, but then also to please take action. Thank you, Brian, for organizing this for our district.
Yeah, I think, you know, the biggest difference you'll see, we did approve it last year as well, but it was just getting started last year and this year we tried to put process and procedure and kind of all elements onto a document so that we were consistent across the board. So what you'll notice is that we have our fire drills included, we have our run high fight lessons that are included in these drills, so we redo this every year. We're continuing to move forward with kind of our run high fight for students, providing the lessons at all grade levels at the beginning of the year and then practicing throughout the year. This year in particular to note was the first time that we did a evacuation to an off-site location. We've done that already K5 and it's planned for spring for middle and high school. I, I thought it was as successful as it absolutely could. You know, it's really about doing these drills in the most non-threatening point of view, right? We don't practice, say that it's a drill for an active intruder. It's very proactive and, and you know, it's just not, it's not an opportunity to scare kids into action, it's just a way to practice going to a different location and if you were ever felt like you were safe, unsafe, this is a place where you could go. And so it's more, again, what we've talked to this group about, about run high fight is about teaching life skills. So these are the things you can get whether you're in the community, whether at home, anywhere. And so we've done those this year. We get kind of one, like missed month a year. We've actually set, we already used those at the middle and high school for the past November. What ended up happening at the high school was we had that potential, there was concern about if there was a safety threat to our high school and that was the same day that we were supposed to practice barricading and felt that it would, it would make, it would just raise elevation and that's not our point. Another thing that the state actually law just passed that's really beneficial for kids is that anytime that there's a drill coming up, including a fire drill, we can give warning. So that was a previous state law where we could not give warning to kids and to teachers really that, that those were about to come or this is the day we're going to do it. And now we can actually tell them, we're going to do a fire drill on this day at this time. It just alleviates a lot of anxiety for kids and it just lets them know it's a job. Besides all the other implication about kids' hearing needs and sensory needs, it's a lot of scary place, so when it goes out. So, so we continue to track everything that we do. We're doing barricading still, drills to just practice, what would, what would we do? This year we brought up a lot of discussion about with the new high school renovations because now we're upstairs, right? It's almost all glass, so what do we, do we still teach barricading in those classrooms? And so the teachers are having conversations with their kids. They're still practicing the barricading because again, it's a life skill and they might be in a different classroom or they could be in an office 10 years down the line and need to know how to barricade, but barricading is not the first option and so running is clearly right. We did a scenario and you were in one of those classrooms and you knew that there was an armed intruder in the building and you were in a room full of glass, you would talk to your students about getting out. And so we're working with Dave on some different ways to exit out of that second floor. There's a mechanical room that actually could have some access points so where we could get out quicker and faster and so we're talking about some strategies on how to do that and then luckily we still have some safety grant money that we can still implement so we can put that to use to make kids and staff be as safe as possible within our buildings.
There is a, an actual event in the community and the building goes into a hole for a period of time, does that count as then your monthly drill?
I don't know if it, it probably can, because the, the drill is about having to practice it and so if you're practicing it, it could, it could count. Yeah. So you can, so much you can get a one in, not knowing it. And the other thing that's kind of changed after the last few years is it used to, you had to leave the building for it to be a drill and that isn't the case anymore either. And so you can do a barricade, you can do a barricading and those are all considered practice because it's all part of, part of safety.
That just applies to intruders right now, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just make sure. I imagine you want to.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Thank you.
It's an action item.
Second.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 70, consideration of approval for assistant fleet tech position.
Good to meet board members and we're thankful to have both Scott and Brian. Everyone know Brian. Brian is our transportation coordinator. Brian, I'm thankful that you're here. I know your day starts really early, 5:30 easily in the morning and I know he's in the office by six and so here you are tonight. Thank you not only for your visioning for this position and your advocacy. This is a position, Scott, maybe if you don't mind, I want to turn it over to you, that was born out of really, we think necessity at this point, just because of some new fleet that we have in our, in our district and making certain it's up, it's upkeep is where it needs to be. Scott, may I please turn it over to you?
Sure, do you want me to speak from the upper seats or?
Why don't you come up here so that we can talk on the camera.
So thanks. This is a position that was existent in our district many years ago as really a second mechanic. We had two mechanics probably for the first three years of my tenure here and through attrition, that position was eliminated when that person retired. We hadn't filled it and under Brian's leadership over the last year and a half, it was very apparent that having one mechanic to service over 30 vehicles, 30 buses, was borderline a little bit crazy in terms of keeping up with the proactive maintenance that needs to take place. Last year, we mentioned this both at building and grounds and finance, but I'll just say it again, last year we spent about $50,000 with a local bus company that we do service with, you know, body shop and that kind of thing. We don't do body work there in our department, we don't have equipment or the manpower. But one of the things we did do is under Brian's leadership is taking a proactive approach to ensuring that when there's an issue to one of our vehicles, it's not because we're not able to maintain our fleet, it's because of some unforeseen circumstance. And the only way we do that is make sure that we're keeping track of up-to-date things that need to be done on the vehicles on a regular basis, so we're not always reaction, reactionary. It sounds kind of cliched to be proactive and not reaction, but the fact of the matter is for a while we've been that way. Nelson's was amazing to come in, the gentleman that they hired was a retired fleet mechanic from a different school district. He was amazing with, and Brian and I said, boy, we're spending the same or more money to contract this out with another firm. We have an amazing mechanic that we hired about a year ago and he, his leadership in being able to work with an assistant will help him do a variety of things in our buses that he just simply can't do when he by himself. The job description that we talked about at those other committees that are up on the screen, I guess we're putting that up. So from a budgetary point of view, the dollars are in the budget as a service for working with outside agencies on our, on our vehicles and we think, you know what, we own our own fleet and we own a lot of vehicles that are buses and we feel that having a, an assistant will do wonders in making sure that we keep our vehicles up to date. Brian, am I sure I missed something?
Can you talk about having a backup driver?
Sure, yeah. Do you want to speak to that? Just what's happening with Joe?
Sure, sure. I'm okay as well. So, so one of the issues that we always keep the forefront of our mind in our expedition is staffing and, and that's something that we, we always want to focus on and bringing on an additional person, this is somebody that we would also have get their CBL and their bus license, which is consistent with really anybody that joins my team. Joe, our mechanic, got his bus license and he drives a lot to help support us. I have mine, I drive a lot to help support us as well. And then Jenny, who joined our staff as our assistant, we got her, her bus license as well. She hasn't been two years to get behind the wheel yet. It's there, it's there for emergency reasons and like we had talked about very briefly right before the start of this meeting, things are going to happen, they're out there, they're down the road, you're just not going to avoid that. We can try and limit it as much as possible, but the thing that we want to do is make sure that we're putting ourselves in a position to be able to react to those things that might happen. And having certainly an additional body that's going to be able to help with those types of situations, whether it's run routes for us or run spare buses around or anything like that, is definitely going to help with the operations in addition to the fleet maintenance and that's a big part of it.
Thank you. Other questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
I mean, you're both over here, sir. Motion by Danny, seconded by Brad. Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for supporting us, your partner.
Please, also to extend publicly a note of gratitude to Brian. Brian has now been with us about 14, 16 months, thereabouts, and during that time has really been able to help not only look at where we're at as an organization, but improve upon it, whether it be routes or it be software or it be thinking creatively about getting more hands on deck when it comes to driving. He's someone whose judgment and his vision for his program is really very impressive and I, I. And I, I, I want to say on behalf, I believe of the board and your colleagues, how grateful we are to have you as part of our family. So thank you for all you've done and we're so glad you're viking.
That's kind of you to say, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right, now we move to eight citizens comments.
We're going to listen. Did you just say eight and nine? Yeah.
Other citizens comments?
All right, hearing none. We'll move on to nine. Your agenda items are listed as always. If you have, there's kind of a long list. If you have any others that you'd like to add to the agenda, please feel free to email those to me or myself. Ten is schedule of next meetings.
Speaker President. Just quickly mention, um, we have a new, uh, meeting time for buildings, grounds and transportation. We're going to meet at five thirty, uh, next Monday night over at the district office. Please thank you.
Um, I will not be here on the sixth. Okay.
All right, it's time to move on to eleven, closed session, and the closed session per, per section nineteen point eight five, front one and front two. Considered employment promotion compensation for performance evaluation data of any public employee in which the government or body has jurisdiction or exercises response to.
So second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Leah, roll call Danny.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Herbert.
Yes.
Leah.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
I'm also here. It's fifty-five minutes.
Thank you. We have had a little time here.
Your class was sour.
You betcha.